Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna So, thank you all very much for joining in. Today is fourteenth of September, right? We are nine days progressing towards the most auspicious Radaashthami. So, let us start our session today by, as usual, by chanting Hari Krishna, Mahamanta Vichri La Prabhupada. Let me share my screen and then we will start with our chanting. Namum Vishnu Padaya Krishna Peshaya Bhootale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namine Namaste Sarasvate Deva Gauravani Prachari Nenir Visesho Shunyavadi Paschatyade Shatari Ne Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna Krishna Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari
Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nittananda Sri Adhita Gadaadhar Shiva Shadim Boor Bhatam Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram Ram Ram
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari Namum Vishnu Padaya Prabhu Nittananda Sri Adhita Gadaadhar Shiva Shadim Shiva Shadim Bhaktivedanta Swami Shiva Shadim 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 Om Jnana Kirmara Nsya Jnana Jnana Shalakaya Chaksharanam Shiva Shadim 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 Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari Hari Ram Hari Ram 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 Hari Hari Shiva Shadim 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 Hari Krishna So, we are continuing to read from chapter six of this book Krishna Consciousness Topmost Yoga System. So, yesterday we were seeing the three levels of understanding of Supreme Personality of Godhead. What are the three levels of understanding? Brahmati, Paramatmeti, Bhagavaniti, Shabhyate. So, we saw that Prabhupada is explaining how there are three phases. One is the Brahman understanding, the second is the Paramatma understanding, and finally it is the understanding of the Supreme Personality of Godhead in his Shama Sundara Form, Personal Form of the Lord. Alright, so let's quickly now move forward. We finish this chapter today. Let's try to complete this chapter today. So, yeah, I can see Shridhar Prabhu's hand up. Let me share my screen. Yeah, Shridhar Prabhu, please go ahead. If no one knows the Supreme Personality of Godhead, how can he be known?
Shridhar Prabhu No one knows the Supreme Personality of Godhead, how can he be known? He can be known when the Supreme Lord comes before you and reveals himself to you. Then you can know our senses are imperfect and they cannot realize the Supreme Truth. When you adopt a submissive attitude and chant, realization begins from the tongue. To eat, to vibrate sound is the business of the tongue. If you can control your tongue for prasadham spiritual food and make the sound vibration of the holy name, then by surrender of the tongue, you can control all other senses. All, wait one minute, all other senses, if you cannot control your tongue, you cannot, you cannot control your sense, taste prasadham and become spiritually advanced. You can have this process at your home, offer vegetarian food to Krishna, chant Hari Krishna Mandra and offer obisans.
Namu Brummai Yeah, so let's discuss this, very, very important. Right? Vaachao Vegam Inna Inna Necro instruction is mentioned, right? Vaachao Vegam Manasa Krodha Vegam Jiva Vegam Udarao Upasta Vegam Etaan Deegan Yo Vishahe Tiraha Sarvam Abhimam Prativamsu Shisha So, it starts with the tongue, right? That verse also Rupa Goswami mentions. Vaachao Vegam, the Necro instruction. Vaachao Vegam means first you have to control the tongue. And in the, in the purport, Prabhupada is also talking about how the, our three, the tongue, the belly and the genitals are in three, are in a straight line. When we control that tongue, we are automatically able to control the belly and we are able to control the genitals. Right? So, Vaachao Vegam, there are two. Vaachao Vegam, Manasa Krodha Vegam. They are the, the, the urges of the mind and the urges of anger. Right? We get, we get very angry and it all, it all, the controlling of anger, control of the mind, everything begins with the controlling of the tongue. So, Vaachao Vegam, very interesting. That when we control the tongue, automatically our belly, belly means overeating or over endeavoring for things. And Udarao Upasta Vegam, that means the, the urges of our genitals. All that will be controlled. So, that's what is given here also by Shila Prabhupada. They're saying, you're control your tongue, you can control all of the other senses. And the, but prasadham prayers also we say that, right? Sharira Vidya Jal Jodhe Indriya Tahayakar Jiva Fele Vishya Sagre Tara Madhye Jivati Logomoye Sudirmati Thake Jeta Khetina Samsare Krishna Bada Doyamoyam Kori Baro Jiva Jai Swa Prasad Anndhi Lo Bhaye Se Naam Rata Paao Radha Krishna Gunagao Preme Dako Sri Chaitanya Nikai, right? We are singing, we are chanting this prayer every time before we honor prasadham. And what are we saying? Sharira Vidya Jal Jodhe Indriya Tahayakar. Right? This network of senses actually binding us to this material world. But Jive Fele Vishya Sagre Tara Madhye Jivati Logomoye Sudirmati Thake Jeta Khetina Samsare Right? In the Samsara Chakra of Janna, Janma Mriti Jara Pyadi, all of our senses are getting ourselves entangled. But Krishna Bada Doyamoy Kori Baro Jiva Jai, right? But Krishna is very merciful, is given us this nice Krishna prasadham. Right? When we honor only Krishna prasadham, then one aspect of the tongue is satisfied. That is, what is that? Jiva Vegam, which is coming after that. Vaachao Vegam Manasa Krodha Vegam Jiva Vegam. Ah, that means when we, when we simply honor Krishna prasadham, the tongue is, is suitably controlled. And then what happens? Vaachao Vegam happens. When, when, when our Jiva is controlled by having only Krishna prasadham, then by having that Krishna prasadham, our mind gets purified. And when our mind gets purified and then whatever thoughts are running in the mind, that is what we are using our tongue to vibrate, right? Whatever is unlimited thoughts, we're coming into our mind. A fraction of that actually comes out of our mouth when we talk. In that way, our Vaachao Vegam is also controlled. What we speak, in that purport, very beautifully Prabhupada mentions. Vaachao Vegam, it is not about being silent. That is not how the, the speech is controlled. By, even better than being moaner. Silence is golden, right? It is mentioned. Silence is golden, silence is very, very, very important. But even better than being silent, how the Vaachao Vegam is attained or how the tongue can be controlled. The tongue can be controlled by simply talking about Supreme Personality of Godhead, Lord Sri Krishna. That is how we dovetail our speaking propensity, simply by glorifying the Supreme Personality of Godhead, Lord Sri Krishna. Yes, Prabhu, go ahead. Okay, okay, we'll have a sarvagopishne, Madhaji. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Namum Vishnu Padaya Gobharam Nacha Hitaaya Char Jagat Hitaaya Krishnaaya Gobindaya Namum Namah Everyone can offer and then take the food with friends and chant before the picture of Krishna and live a pure life. Just to see the result, the whole world will become Vaikunta. Where there is no activity. Always anxious because, because we accept this material life. Just the opposite is so in the spiritual world. No one however knows how to get out of the material concept. Taking and intoxicating doesn't help. The same anxieties are there when you are finished being drunk. If you want to be free and want life determined with bliss and knowledge, take to Krishna. No one can know God, but there is the way, the process of Krishna consciousness. In the Shrimat Bhagavatam, it is stated that no one remain in the, in their own position.
Hari Krishna, Madhaji, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hari Krishna, Madhaji Very good. Yeah, so here, if you want to be free and want a life eternally with bliss and knowledge, you need to take to Krishna consciousness. Otherwise, all of these intoxicating things, right? We, we sometimes, sometimes take to, you know, just for a change of mind. Oh, I'm feeling very distressed, I'm suffering right now. So, what do I do? I distract myself, watching a TV, watching, you know, sports or like that. But then what happens? We are just disconnecting with our present. We are trying to forget it. But after, after that entire period is over, then we have to come back and face the realities and it. So, in order to have complete bliss eternally, then the process is given by Shila Prabhupada here. Take up to this process of Krishna consciousness. And what is this process of Krishna consciousness that will be elaborated by Prabhupada now. Alright, so who's there next? Karpa Goli Madhaji, go ahead. In the Shrimat Bhagavatam from there. Goli Madhaji, please unmute yourself. Very good. Okay, Shoba Madhaji, can you unmute yourself?
Hari Krishna, I'm an audible Madhaji, Shiva Shadim.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Shila Prabhupada Kijay. In the Shrimat Bhagavatam, it is stated that no one can conquer him or approach him, but he becomes conquered. How? Let people remain in their own position, but let them give up nonsense speculation through volumes of books. Thousands of books are printed and read and after six months thrown away. This way and that, how can you know the Supreme? By speculation on the information supplied by your blunt senses. Give up research, throw it, throw it away, just become submissive. Apparently that you are limited and sub, subordinate to material nature and to God. No one can be equal to or greater than God, so be submissive. Try to hear about the glories of Supreme Lord from the authority, authorized sources. Such authority is handed over by disciplic succession. If you can understand by the same authority as Ajuna, that is real authority. God is always ready to reveal. You just become Krishna conscious. Follow the path, travel, traversed by the great Acharyas. The devoted teachers and then everything will be known. Although he is conquerable and unknowable, he can be known in your home. If you take to this process and follow the principles.
Hari Krishna, Shiva Shadim Shiva Shadim So, God is always ready to reveal, you just become Krishna conscious. How do we become Krishna conscious? By following the path traversed by the great Acharyas. By being a part of this Brahman Madhva Gaudiya Vaishnava Parampara. Then everything will be known if you are submissively hearing to our spiritual teachers. Ajita Jito, in Shrimat Bhagavatam, there is a verse which says Ajita Jito. That means one who is Ajita, one who is unconquerable, becomes Jito, becomes conquered. When one actually follows this practice of Krishna consciousness, yeah? Okay, Karpa Goli Madhaji, are you able to unmute yourself now? Okay, I think you're not there. Okay, Lila Nathini Madhaji, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yeah, Madhaji.
Go ahead.
Hari Krishna, Shiva Shadim If you, if you take to this process and follow the principles, what will be the result? As soon as you understand, you will know that the Supreme Lord is the cause of all causes. But that he is not caused by any other cause and he is the master of all planets. This is not except, accepting blindly. God has given you the power of reason, the power of arguing, but don't argue falsely. If you want to know the transcendental signs, you must surrender. To surrender, surrender to authority and know him by signs. Don't surrender to a fool or a rascal. Find one who is coming to disciplic succession, one who is fully convinced about the supreme absolute truth. If you find such a person, surrender and try to please him, serve him and question him. Surrender unto him, he surrender to God. Questions to learn, not to waste time. The process is there, but if you waste time by intoxication, we will never see him. The unconquerable Lord, follow the principles, but, and slowly but surely, but without doubt, you will know. Yes, I am making progress, you will see. And it is very easy and you can execute it and be happy and be in a happy mood. Study, take part with music, eat prasadham and no one can cheat you by this process. But if you want to be cheated, go to the cheaters. Try to understand it from the authorities, authoritative source and apply it in your life. Amongst the dying mortals, you will become the most intelligent because you are freed from sinful actions. If you act only for Krishna, then you are freed from all reactions. You will be, you will have to, you will have no anxiety over what is auspicious or inhospicious because you will be in touch with the most auspicious. This is the process. Ultimately, we can get in touch with Krishna. Life will be successful. Anyone can adopt it because it is very simple.
Hari Krishna, thank you, Madhaji.
Thank you, Hari Gur, Madhaji.
Thank you, Hari Gur. Alright, so here, Prabhupada is mentioning a very, very important point, right? Whether, whether we are performing our actions as karma, akarma or vikarma? Right? Are we performing our actions as akarma, vikarma or karma? Right? Karma means we perform pious actions. And we perform pious actions and we are expecting some kind of return from that. We will definitely get, if you are performing pious activities, we will get good reactions for it. And then if you are performing sinful activities, we will get the reactions for that also. But here Prabhupada is saying, we will, we, we will have anxiety whether we are performing pious actions or we are performing sinful actions, why? Because we will have this material body where we will be worrying, oh, what is going to happen next because of the uncertainty that is prevailing, right? Because the law of karma is so intrinsic that we don't know when a particular reaction is coming or a particular sinful reaction is coming or when a particular pious, pious reaction is coming, right? So, it is both the pious as well as impious activities are both auspicious and so-called inhospicious activities are not good enough. We have to perform a karma. That means you have to work for the exclusive pleasure of the Lord, not being attached to the results of the activities, knowing well that I am only one of the doers. Right? Again, we come back to the same concept of the three doers, right? I as a Jiva desire, the Lord as a Supreme Personality of Godhead sanctions and then prakruti or the material nature arranges for it. So, when we understand this, that I am not the controller of the entire thing, then we will not be anxious. We will just do our duty and then we will leave the rest to the Supreme Lord. And in this way, life will become successful. In this world also, we live happily without anxiety and yadgatvane ivartante tadaama paramama. At the end of this life, having lived peacefully in this life by being dependent on the Lord and after the end of this life also, we will go back home, back to Godhead. So, we need not be worried about the results, why? Because we are not the doers. Anything and everything that happens, happens by the mercy of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. That's what it is. Alright, anyone else wants to read? Karpa Goli Madhaji, you can raise your hand. Yeah, Ramya Madhaji, go ahead.
Hari Krishna, Madhaji Hari Krishna, Madhaji There is a nice formula presented by Krishna himself. One should understand the position of Krishna. He is unborn and without any cause. We have experienced all of us that we are born and we have a cause. Our father is our cause. If someone poses himself as God, he has to prove that he is unborn and uncauseed. Our practical experience is that we are born. Krishna is not born. We have to understand this. Understanding this is to be firmly convinced he is the cause, but is not caused. And since he is not caused, he is the proprietor of all manifestation. One who understands this simple philosophy is not illusion. We are generally illusion. We are claiming the ownership of the land. But before my birth, the land was here and after my death, it will still be here. How long will I go on claiming in body after body? This is my land, this is my land. It is not, is it not nonsense? One has to be out of illusion. We should know that whatever we are doing in the material concept of life is the illusion. We have to understand whether we are illusion or not. And all conditioned souls are illusion. He who learns to be disillusioned gets free of all encumbrances. If we want freedom from all bonds, then we have to understand God. There is no neglecting this, it is our prime duty.
Hari Krishna, thank you, Madhaji.
Millions of entities, one may be. Millions of entities, one may be.
Hari Bol, thank you. So, so in this, in these two paragraphs, Prabhupada is actually talking about our illusion, right? We were talking about the four kinds of defects that all of us have. Which is the tendency to make mistakes, the tendency to cheat, the imperfect senses and to be in illusion. Right? To be in illusion means what? We think, oh, this is my speaker, this is my laptop, this is my mobile, etc. Prabhupada is giving the example of the land, isn't it? Prabhupada is giving the example of the land, right? The land was existing before, the laptop was existing before, it will continue to exist, right? Even after a person leaves his body, right? But what do we think? Aham Mameeti, this is mine and whatever is, whatever is related to my material body is also mine. That is the kind of illusion that we are subjecting ourselves to. This is my land, this is my house, this is my laptop, this is my speaker, this is my mobile, etc., etc., right? How do we get out of this bond? How do we get out of this bond? We need to understand who is the actual proprietor of everything. That means these objects continue to exist before I was, before I occupied it, right? Because I bought this from someone else. So this laptop was held by somebody else before I had it. Now I am having it. I may give it off to somebody else. So this laptop or this mobile continues to exist before or after I get it, right? Before and after I get this particular mobile or I pass it on to someone else. So which means that I am not the proprietor of this, I am the caretaker of this for this particular point in time. Because this has been allocated to me for some reason, right? So when we understand that who is the actual proprietor of everything, right? Everybody is the caretaker of the resources, of the properties, of the skills, whatever is allocated to them. And they will have to just pass on. When they pass on, it will still remain. Whether it is the resources, whether it is the laptop or the speaker or whatever, right? So we need to understand whom does it all actually belong to. And we understand, then again we come to five point twenty-nine of the Bhagavad Gita. Right? Then only we will be without anxiety. Otherwise, you will think, oh my God, I lost this, oh my God, I lost this. You are perennially in anxiety because we don't know that we have been assigned that and now it has been taken away by the will of the Lord. So the peace formula that is mentioned by Prabhupada, by mentioned by Krishna in the Bhagavad Gita, which is further explained as peace formula by Prabhupada and his Prabhupada. Is understanding Krishna as the CEO, the chief controller, the chief enjoyer and the chief owner. And we understand Krishna is the owner, then we will be free of anxiety. So this is the actual enlightenment that we need to understand, right? Alright, Karpa Goli Madhaji, please try one last time. Out of millions of entities. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare. Matha Ji, you can switch on your camera. Then I know that you are there and you want to read. Okay, fine. So anyone else wants to read? Yeah, Sumitji Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Matha Ji, Dandad Pranam.
Hari Bol, Dandad Pranam.
Enlightened, uh.
Out of millions of entities.
One may be enlightened. Generally, we are all born fools. As soon as I take birth, I am nurtured by parents and educated to falsely claim a land as my own. National education means to make you more foolish. Am I not foolish? I am changing my body like a dress, life after life. You have so many minds, so many dresses. Why do you claim this one? Why don't you understand? This dress is nice, but next moment, I may be in another. You are in the grip of nature. You cannot say what dress you will have. Nature make me American. No, material nature controls. If you live like a dog here, take a dog's dress. If you live like a, if you live a godly life here, take God. Out of many fools, someone tries to understand what I actually am. Dog, American, Russian, this real inquiry goes on. If you inquire, you have to ask someone, not just yourself. When crossing the street in a place you don't know, you have to ask the policeman or some gentleman for what I am. You have to go to an authority also. What is a spiritual master? He is a person conversant with the signs of Krishna. Ordinarily, nobody inquires, but if a man does, he can make progress and come to this understanding. Krishna is the cause of all causes.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Matha Ji.
Thank you, Matha Ji. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. So in our material life also, we have this experience, right? When we want to learn dance, music, you know, anything, then we go to a teacher who actually imparts the skills to us. So what makes us think that the spiritual knowledge, which is transcendental knowledge, that can be acquired simply by mental speculation? By simply thinking that, you know, I will be able to do it, I will be able to learn on my own. So that is a fallacy, that in itself is illusion, right? Because we think that we can learn on our own, where even for material education, we are seeking guided, seeking a bona fide teacher who is qualified in that particular subject to teach us. But when it comes to spiritual subject matters, we think we can speculate, but we cannot. That's what Prabhupada is mentioning here. One can make progress and come to this understanding only when one makes suitable inquiry. That is what is important. Next is Anjana Madhaji, go ahead. Yeah, Karpa Goli Madhaji, I see you. After Ranjana Madhaji, Nisha Madhaji, you can read. Okay, Matha Ji. Hari Bol, yes.
Namaste, Matha Ji, Dandad Pranam. Four kind of people followers of scriptures and higher authority inquire about Krishna. Those addicted to sinful activities can't inquire, they go on in intoxication. The righteous, pious man enquires and goes to God is a facility. Facility is given to people in this process by the authority to make people happy, not to exploit people. The purpose of Iskhn is in this way. To understand the signs of God, you want happiness. Here it is. You are distressed by sinful actions, but if there is no sinful reaction, there is no suffering. One who knows Krishna without doubt is relieved of all reactions. Krishna says, says, come to me and I will give you freedom from all reactions. Do not turn and disbelieve it. He can give you shelter. He has all power. If I give you such a promise, because I have no such power, I may break the promise.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Matha Ji. So what does Krishna tell? Krishna is saying, you don't perform karma or vikarma. Don't perform biased actions, don't perform sinful actions. Work for me. Sarva dharma paritya jya, right? What is the dharma that we have to give up? Right? In Bhagavatam, it starts where Bhagavad Gita ends. Right? What does he say? How does it start? That is kaitava dharma. Right? What is this kaitava dharma? Kaitava dharma means a dharma that we think is dharma, but we are performing false and gratification. That is what is called kaitava dharma. And that is the cheating religion that we want to give up, right? And what is the dharma that we want to do? The dharma that we want to do is to work for the pleasure of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. And then when we work like that, then what does Krishna say? Then I will ensure that you are freed from both your pious reactions and your sinful reactions. Don't worry about it. This is a promise that is given by Krishna. And then Prabhupada makes a very beautiful point here, right? Everyone wants happiness. And what is the purpose of Iskhn, the international study for Krishna consciousness? Is to provide everybody with this happiness, right? But we want, what do we want to do? We want to prefer to remain in this dukkhalim and ashavatam. We don't want, take up the process of Krishna consciousness and go back, right? We want it, but we don't want to do the, the instructions that are given in order to achieve it, right? We want quick fixes, we want two-minute Maggie, right? Give me something that immediately I want to go back, right? What about the luggage and the baggage that we have accumulated in our heart of so much of anarthaas, right? So it is a gradual process, but Krishna himself tells here, don't worry. Bahshu Chaha, don't worry, I will relieve you of all the sinful reactions like that. Nisha Madhaji, go ahead. If you associate yourself.
Dandad Pranam.
Hari Bol, Dandad Pranam.
Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jaye, Sabhi Ko Dandad Pranam. If you associate yourself with Krishna consciousness, your dormant relationship with Krishna will be evoked. You have a relationship with him. There is no question of disbelief. It is simply foolishness. The dormant relationship is there. You want to serve Krishna, but simply by the spell of illusion, we think we have no connection with Krishna. We go on doing all independent nonsense and we are always anxious. When we associate with these dormant feelings for Krishna, however, we will become engaged in Krishna consciousness. God is unborn indicates that he is different from the material world. We have no such experience of the unborn. This city was born. History is filled with dates, spiritual nature, however, is unborn. And at once, we can see the difference. The material nature is born. You have to understand, if Krishna is unborn, then he is spiritual, not like one of us. Krishna is not some extraordinary person who has also born. He is not born. So how can I decide? He is an ordinary man. Those who are fools and rascals think of me as an ordinary man. Krishna says in the Gita, he is different from everything in the world. He is anadi, without cause.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Matha Ji.
Dandad Pranam, thank you.
Hari Bol. So fools deride the Lord, right? Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, only fools will deride me, think me as an ordinary person who has also, who has also appeared. Who is also born in this world according to one's guna and karma. But when the Lord appears, he does not appear according to his guna and karma, right? He decides his family, he sends his family before he appears. So in this way, we understand that. Right? By understanding the appearance and activities of the Lord, the Supreme Personality of Godhead, we can actually purify our own lives and we can go back home back to Godhead. Such is the power, such is the extraordinariness of Lord Sri Krishna. But what do we think? We also, we think that just as we are born in this world according to our guna and karma, similarly, the Lord is also born. And then we are doing, when we are understanding like this, then we are putting ourselves into deeper and deeper illusion. When we put ourselves into deeper and deeper illusion, the more time and effort it is going to take to revive our dormant Krishna consciousness. But when we with a submissive heart hear from a bona fide authority, a spiritual authority, then it becomes, it is going to become more and more easier for us to reawaken our dormant relationship with Lord Sri Krishna. Yes, Karpa Goli Madhaji, please unmute yourself. Are you able to unmute yourself now?
It's Matha Ji, can you hear me?
Hari Bol, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Krishna may be spiritual.
Krishna may be spiritual, but there are other spiritual bodies. We have, we have spiritual bodies like Krishnas, but they are born. They are not exactly born. It is like the sparks of the fire. The sparks are not born from the fire. They are actually dead. We are also not born. We are sparks that come out of the original form. Even if you are not born, the sparks come out of Krishna. So they are different. The sparks of the fire are fire, but they are not the original fire. As for quality, we are the same as Krishna. It is like the difference between the father and son. Father and son are different and non-different at the same time. The son is an expansion of the father, but he cannot claim that he is the father. That would be the nonsense. Because Krishna is declaring himself Supreme Proprietor, he is therefore different from anything. If I am the proprietor of New York State, I am still not in, I am still not New York State. In every step, there is duality. No one can say we are completely one with God. Then you can understand Krishna, Krishnas and your own position is a nice analytic way. Then at once, you become free from sinful reactions. This process will help you. chant Hare Krishna and cleanse your mind, you will receive the message. No, one has to be qualified. If you chant and hear for no payment, you will approach God. All things will become clear and illuminated. Thank you, Matha Ji.
Hare Krishna, thank you.
Sorry for samnus, Nirdra Kishim.
No, no, no. That's why I have to switch on your camera, so that you know you are able to open your camera is easy.
Thank you, Matha Ji.
Dandad Pranam. So, so here, very beautiful point Prabhupada is making. What is Prabhupada saying? Right? We are simultaneously one with the Lord and at the same time, different from the Lord, right? Chetani Mahaprabhu is very beautifully given as this Tatwa, which is inconceivable oneness and difference. A chintya, abeda, abeda Tatwa, wherein the example given by Prabhupada here is the fire and the spark of fire, right? The spark of fire has got the same attributes as that of fire, but it is in quantity, it is not equal to the fire, right? Prabhupada also gives example of a drop of water in the ocean, right? The chemical composition of a drop in the ocean has the same as that of the ocean, right? But the ocean has the capacity to drown people. A drop of water does not have that capacity. So we are equal in quality with the Lord, right? A spark of the fire can only create a, probably a dot on your body, but if there is too much of fire, then it can engulf the entire body and can burn the entire body. So that is the difference in the potency between Jiva and, and the Lord, that is Brahman and Parabrahman. Brahman is, the Jiva is infinitesimal part of the Supreme Lord. The Jiva is also satchitan ananda and the Supreme Lord is also satchitan ananda. But infinitesimal and infinite, there is a difference. So that is what is explained by Prabhupada here. A chintya, abeda, abeda Tatwa, while we are equal in quality with the Supreme Personality of Godhead, we are also satchitan ananda, but we are infinitesimal in comparison to the Supreme Personality of Godhead. When we chant and cleanse our mind, when chetho darpanam marijanam happens, then we become qualified to understand this transcendental knowledge. That is why it is mentioned. So it is only with the mercy of the Supreme Personality of Godhead that our ignorance can be removed. And then what happens? Krishna will light the lamp of transcendental knowledge in our hearts, right? So we are dependent on the Lord for the clearance of our ignorance and for this transcendental lamp of knowledge to be lit in our hearts. So that we will become clear and illuminated with proper knowledge. So with this, this chapter is over and we will also end our session. Let's see who all we have today. We have Leela Nandini, Rukmini Madhaji giving us nice devotion today. Thank you, Ramya Madhaji, Nisha Madhaji, thank you, Karpa Goli Madhaji, Shoba Madhaji, Shridhar Prabhu, Sarva Gopeshwari Madhaji, Moashmi Madhaji, Anjana Madhaji, thank you very much for joining in. Vanamali Prabhu is giving devotion. Thank you. Itai God Premanande, Hari Hari Bol, Hare Krishna. Thank you very much. We will do Hari Nam Sangkirtan and then we will come to Nagaveni Madhaji to ask her what her query is or what she wants to share. Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jaye, Anand Goji Vaishnava Vrindha Ki Jaye. Hari Nam Sangkirtan Ki Jay, Jyotiru Shri La Prabhupada Gurus Dev Ki Jay. Anandakoji Vaishnavarindaki Jay, Naga Gora Prem Anande, Hari Hari Bol. Hare Krishna, so everyone can meet themselves now. Give last cover, Nagavani Madhaji. Yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Dandak Pranam to all. Madhaji, not exactly regarding to today's reading, but I, can you please explain me? There are four types of mukti. Sarujya mukti, sahrupya mukti.
Five types, there are five types of mukti.
Yeah, five types, no? Can you please explain, like sahrupya mukti is a term, Kamsa got sahrupya mukti, no?
Yeah, yeah, so there are five kinds of liberation. The first kind is a sauyujya mukti. Sauyujya mukti is Brahman, merging into the Brahman. A devotee will never want that kind of liberation. That is sauyujya mukti, that is the first level of realization of the absolute truth, before you understand paramatma and bhagavan realization. And even if you attain the sauyujya mukti, you will come back, because there is no bliss. There is no bliss, because bliss is experienced only when you serve the supreme Lord. Jiveera sahrupe, Krishnaera nityadas. So when we are not serving the Lord, even when we attain Brahman realization, we will fall down. So that is sauyujya mukti. The second one, the other four will be accepted by a devotee provided there is an opportunity for serving the Lord, right? The second one is sahrupya mukti. Sahrupya mukti means to get the same form as the Lord. To be, to get the same form of the Lord, a devotee accepts that position, provided there is an opportunity to serve the Lord. That is sahrupya mukti. And then there is sahlokyamukti, that means we get, we get to go to the lokam of the Lord, sahlokyamukti. Now we get to go to the lokam of the Lord, but a devotee accepts it only when there is service, active service to the Lord. And then sarshti, sarshti means, we have the opulences of the Lord. We also are, you know, we become very knowledgeable, we become very famous, we become very rich, etc. But a devotee accepts all those opulences only when he has the opportunity to use those opulences in the service of the Lord. And then finally, samipya, samipya means staying near, very near to the Lord, very close to the Lord. That also, a devotee does not want to just sit and see the Lord and enjoy the Lord, no. A devotee wants to be near the Lord, means to serve the Lord. What are the, what does the Lord want? How can I give pleasure to the Lord? So those four mukties, which is sarshti, samipya, sahlokyamukti and sahrupya, is accepted by the Lord. I mean, is accepted by the devotee, provided there is an opportunity to serve the Lord. Is it okay, Madhaji?
Yes, Madhaji. Because Kamsa always used to think of lords that Shankachakra, Gadapadmaam, that is the reason he got the.
No, he got sauyujya mukti actually, he got liberation, that is what is mentioned. All the demons killed by Krishna, Shishupal, Kanta Makra, all of them, they all got sauyujya mukti, because they were thinking of the Lord. Very good, but they did not have the seva bhav, isn't it? And they had, they were thinking of Krishna as an enemy. Oh, when is he going to come and kill me? Hundred percent of the time, he was thinking about Krishna, but he was not favorably thinking. When you are not, when you are not favorably thinking about the Lord in a seva bhav, then we cannot attain any of the other four liberations. Because all the other four have seva important in them, right? So the demons, they attained liberation, liberation means sauyujya mukti, that is my understanding, okay, Madhaji?
Yes, Madhaji. What about Putana, Madhaji? Hari Bol, what about Putana, what sort of liberation?
Putana, Putana got special mercy, because although, I see, there are two things, one is intention and one is action, right? Putana came with the wrong intention, but her action was good, she breastfed Krishna. So Krishna was so nice, right? That is one of the important verses that actually made our Roshugathiva Goswami also become a pure devotee of the Lord, right? So, so what is that? So Putana, although her intentions were bad, her actions were good. And Krishna took her action and did not take her intention. In this way, Putana got, Putana was given the status of a mother, right? The seven kinds of mothers are there, right? Putana got the position of a nurse in the spiritual world.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Thank you so much, Madhaji.
Hare Krishna, Jyotiru Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay, Jyotiru Shri La Gurus Dev Ki Jay, Naga Gora Prem Anande, Hari Hari Bol. So.
Question.
Huh?
Question, Poochukya? Our efforts are going to get the name of Thakurji. Isn't it? So then he gets the mukti to get it?
No, we are getting the seva to get it, we are getting the seva for God. That is why we are saying, what is the highest prayer? We are all followers of Brahman, Madhavagodi, Vaishnava Parampara. Chetna Mahaprabhu, what are you saying? If God is in front of us or not, it does not matter. Our prayer is God, and no matter what condition we are in, we want to get God's care. Right? Our only desire that we have in our heart is to serve the Lord. So liberation may be, we have to leave our birth, death, and death, it is also worship, right? We are not willing to suffer, we want to go back to God's work. That is also not ultimate, what is ultimate? Wherever I am, I will keep my service, that is the eternal aspiration of a devotee.
It means, no matter how it is, as it goes, it goes, everything is good.
Everything is good, everything is good, but God's service is kept.
God's service is kept, even if the next generation, God has done something to us.
If God's service is kept and kept, whether it is a situation or two situations. That is what it is.
So God does not want anything from us.
God, God wants opportunity for us, Hare Krishna, who wants us, right? Oh, God, oh Lord, oh energy of the Lord, engage me in your service. If you want, then it will automatically happen. Prabhupada is, example, we have two hundred notes, if we have twenty, it will come. So we are releasing God's love, so everything comes. I was telling a story the other day, a king's son is a king, he says, whoever I want, I will give it today, right? Some people ask for money, some people ask for house, some people ask for wealth, etc. One person asks, I want to become your friend. So then he invites the king, invites his family, invites friends to eat at home. So the king can eat in a jobdi, jobdi patti, right? So what do the king servants do? They create a big house for him, they create roads from the palace to the, to the, to his home. They provide all the provisions so that, and they provide all the nice foods, right? The king cannot eat with a beggar. So he gets everything, just because he has become a friend of the king. Similarly, when we establish a relationship of service, and what happens, everything else we will get automatically, is that okay?
Okay, thank you, Dandak Pranam.
Hari Bol, Hare Krishna, Dandak Pranam, Shri La Prabhupada Ki.
Thank you, thank you.
If you are free at four fifty PM, you can join for the Bhagavatam session. The Zoom details are posted in the group. Today, by the mercy of Guru and Varanga, I got the opportunity for Brahman Samita class, then I got Bhagavatam, Prabhupada's book, too. So I will post a link in the group later on, if you are not free, you can watch it later, alright?
Madhaji, Dandak Pranam, when did you started Bhagavatam class, Madhaji?
Sorry? When did you start? No, 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 I am giving Bhagavatam class for Bhaktisanga group of the US. So it is at four fifty PM, so I posted the link in Zoom.
Okay, okay, I will join.
Yeah, okay, Hare Krishna, so we will cross all these books, then we will go to Bhagavad Gita, then only we will do systematic study, alright?
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, Madhaji, I have a question, Kubja, Kubja was the goddess of God, when should I ask you that?
Yeah, so Kubja actually, you know, she served the Lord, right? She served the Lord and the Lord actually made her beautiful, right? So she is, she is connected, connected to the Lord as in one of the.
She had the service attitude.
Yeah, I think, but she had Aishwari Abha, because the Lord actually, you know, lifted her, like, you know, from her hunchback position. So yeah, Aishwari Abha, she had, she developed love of Godhead, but she had still had Aishwari Abha, right? So one of the moves of the queens, we can say, yeah? Madhuriya, Aishwari Abha, Kalanda, you know, mix.
Oh, thank you, Madhaji, Hare Krishna.
Kubja, Kubja, why was it a hunchback? It was something, it was sharp, Madhaji. Hunchback was there, what was the reason?
You can refer to the Krishna book, I am not able to immediately recollect. You can refer to the Krishna book, that has got that entire pastime that is given. But you know what status she actually attained, it is also not given. But you know, since she accepted the Lord in the form of, in the form of the Lord, you know, that Aishwari Abha was there. So that is why I am saying, you know, she was not completely Madhuriya, like the Gopis of Rindavan, there was a lot of Aishwari Abha attached.
Yeah, that's right, some story behind that is there.
Yeah, yeah, please read the Krishna book.
Thank you so much, Madhaji.
Thank you.